We are going to go ahead and start in with public hearings. Our first public hearing is for the Tom Water Island annexation in our local agreement. Uh, with um, with the city or with the county of Thurston County. Uh, so we will go ahead and move in and I'm going to first say that this is a hybrid meeting. And I think this is the very first one I have attended, so um, please bear with us. Um, so those wishing to testify have, will be joined in Zoom. And email comments or mail comments will also be uh, considered testimony. If you wish to testify, um, you have contacted the councilman, uh, you've contacted through our council page. Um, and the um, so information for the public hearing will be posted um, with the county announcement. Uh, if you have any, um, I'm reading this and it's not necessarily relating to the opening. So I would like to say, uh, Chair Mahia, do you have any comments before we open up? Uh, this and I have a staff briefing before we open it up for public comment.
Yes, so the purpose of this joint public meeting is to take testimony on the proposed city of Tom Water and Thurston County annexation, interlocal agreement for twelve unincorporated county islands. A joint public hearing was selected by the city council and county commissioners. Decisions by the city council and the board of county commissioners on the interlocal agreement may be made at future separate meetings. With that, Mayor Sullivan, do you want to pass it on to staff for the presentation?
Yes, please. So is Tom Water staff going to start?
I believe. I, I believe that I am going to begin with the presentation. Is that correct, John? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, uh, council and commissioners. I have a, a brief presentation to give. I've given this a couple of different times, variations of it, past work sessions for the city and an open house, which I'll uh, note in the presentation. Uh, my name is Gary Cooper. Um, my, my company's Local Planning Solutions, I do mostly local government planning and primarily in Thurston County. So over the last eight or nine years, I've done, this would be my third annexation with Tom Water. And I've done about the same number with the city of Olympia. So I'm just gonna start um, right off here, hopefully. I practiced this a couple of times today. There we go. Obviously, the opening slide for the joint hearing.
Hey Gary, I'm just still seeing our faces.
Oh, you are? Oh, gosh.
I think you jinxed it by saying you practiced.
I know. Okay, give me a second.
We'll just look at the books behind you while you're doing that.
Let me try it again. My apologies. So you, are you still just seeing me?
Yes, does staff have ability to um, assist?
I'm not sure, I uh, just give me a second here.
I don't believe we can share his screen. He can always, yeah, he can always send it to me if he needs me to share it.
I'm gonna pull it up again. Okay. Now let me see. Well, there's no explanation here as to why that's not pulling up. I'm gonna need a minute.
Okay, did you want to go ahead and send the staff if possible and then they might be able to pull it up?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. Um. Melody, was that you that suggested that?
Yes, he can send it to cityclerk@ci.tomwater.y.us. And I can uh, share it from here.
Okay, I've sent it to you, so but at the meantime, I will try one more time.
Third time's the charm, Gary, you got this.
Yeah, my goodness, you know, I actually practiced this on people today to make sure I was doing it correctly.
Well, here we go.
Got it?
Got it.
That looks like it's working, okay. Okay, so let me go to um, slideshow. From beginning. And. That's not the ideal presentation. There we go. One more thing and I think we've got it. How's that? All right.
That works.
Yeah, nerve wracking, but here we are. So here's the uh, just the cover slide, of course. And um, Tom Water has twelve unincorporated county islands. So these are areas, pockets of the county that are completely surrounded by the city. So the sort of the peach or the salmon collar on that map is the city of Tom Water. The red areas are areas that uh, still remain county. Some of them are very small because there's some areas where we just have a single parcel, like right here, right here, up in the northeast here. So these have been um, I guess for many decades, uh, previous annexation laws made it so that it was a kind of a voluntary process as to whether or not people would be annexed or not. And so there was a little bit of a checkerboard pattern that occurred as annexations occurred over the years. All of these areas, these county islands are urban growth areas, which means that uh, under the Growth Management Act, at one time, the city and the county jointly planned that these would be UGAs. And UGAs are those areas that are basically planned annexation areas to begin with. Uh, typically, ideally, when you designate something as a UGA, you should be planning to annex it within twenty years. So a little bit of an overview of the islands. There are a hundred and sixty total parcels for all twelve, a hundred and sixty-one acres. Seven of these islands have two lots or less. Um, by far the biggest though, which this big old black arrow is pointing toward, is the Trosper Lake Island. So that's a hundred and eleven parcels and a hundred and thirty-two acres. And because it is uh, distinct from the other ones, the city um, and the county agreed that rather than try to annex all twelve islands under one process, that the Trosper Lake Island would be separate and annexed with one ordinance and the other eleven islands would be annexed under another ordinance. So there are actually two annexation processes going on here. So some of the reasons that we want to pursue this annexation are these islands are technically still obviously the responsibility of the county, even though you might have one parcel uh, in the middle of the city. So police and fire response, our uh, county responsibility, roads and stormwater, building and land use permits, code enforcement. A lot of times, people think they're actually in the city because they get a Tom Water address, even though they're in the county, so they think that the, the city's going to come out and do code enforcement. Well, one, we have to sort of explain that no, technically, that's a county um, responsibility. And another one that was brought to our attention by the auditor, um, these separate islands require separate unique voter pamphlets, which obviously is not a very efficient way to, to run elections. And then I guess on the flip side, um, all the islands, because they are surrounded by the city, I think you can reasonably expect that they do, you still primarily use city streets, city amenities such as parks, et cetera. So um, they are benefiting, I guess, from some city amenities that without the city benefiting from the tax proceeds that would, would come from having them actually within the city. So as a result of this, recognizing this, because Tom Water's not unique, this is uh, something that occurs throughout the entire state. Uh, in twenty twenty, the legislature passed a law specifically to address this issue. And it's uh, just an amendment to the annexation, RCW. Uh, new sections were added. Uh, and basically, the legislature passed the law to allow cities and counties to annex these islands through a jointly approved interlocal agreement. That's what we're here tonight to discuss, not the actual annexation, but the approval of an interlocal agreement that would allow the city to annex at a later date. And I will just read this because this is the finding um, from, from the uh, law that was passed in twenty twenty. The legislature finds that city annexations of unincorporated areas within urban growth areas will be more efficient and effective if the county and city develop a jointly approved interlocal agreement so as not to create illogical boundaries or islands of unincorporated territory. So it specifically addresses the islands. So we have been working on this for several months. Um, we began our discussions with the city, the county, and the McLean Black Lake Fire Department, um, as we were required to by the legislation. Uh, McLean Black Lake Fire Department did send us a letter saying they had no objections to us moving forward. If they had, that it could, would have stopped the process in its tracks. But uh, we hit, we um, met with their board of commissioners and their fire chief over a period of time and they decided that they didn't really see any, any problem with, with the city going ahead and doing the annexation. So over the last six, actually, it's been more like seven or eight months at this point, the city and county worked directly together, the staff did, to draft an interlocal agreement. Um, and then on December first, the city conducted an open house to present the interlocal agreement and obviously to discuss the annexations that are being proposed. And then here is where we are now, January eighteenth, um, holding our joint public hearing to consider adopting the interlocal agreement. So if um, both the city and the county do um, agree to adopt the interlocal agreement, then at that point, the ball is basically passed to the city because it would be the city who would be responsible for accomplishing the annexations at a later date. Right now, what we're basically looking at is an agreement that establishes one, that the city and the county both agree that this is uh, in the community's best interest because it creates efficiencies for both governments. And the interlocal agreement also just establishes um, a set of processes that the city and county would use to transfer responsibilities, such as getting information from public works about whether there have been any transportation impact fees, et cetera, et cetera. We've gone through that process. We basically have that all ironed out. Um, so that's where we are with the interlocal. And I guess I'm just trying to stress that the result of any decision you make tonight, if you did vote in favor of the interlocal agreement, that does not mean an annexation has occurred. It just means that there has been an agreement that the county does not object to the city moving forward at a later date with an annexation. So given that, um, again, assuming that the, the vote is positive, the timeline at this time, and of course, which is always subject to change, but the city would hold hearings, a hearing uh, for the first eleven islands on March fifteenth. And if they elected them to effect an annexation, they would adopt an ordinance on that date. At that time, the annexation would occur. For the Trosper Lake Island, we're looking at a date of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and that would be the same process. The city would adopt an annexation ordinance and at that time, an annexation would occur. So another important part of the process, both in terms of how it's laid out in the legislation and of course, it just how the city and the county normally do business, um, there are lots of public notice and public comment opportunities built into the process. So I just want to kind of lay out what has occurred so far. Um, in November, postcards were mailed to all the property owners, residents in the pros, uh, in the annexation areas, letting them know about this proposed ILA and that we were planning to have an open house. Uh, we held that open house on December uh, one, twenty twenty-one. Yeah, similar to what we're doing tonight, it was a virtual open house. Then just a couple of days after that, and this was, uh, this is required actually by the legislation, uh, the city um, published notice of availability of the interlocal agreement in the Olympian. And as required, this notice was published weekly for four weeks. Again, a notice of availability was sent to property owners and residents in the proposed annexation areas and a draft of the interlocal agreement and several other things I must add, um, like a fairly detailed frequently answered questions list, um, a summary of what the differences in taxes and general costs before and after annexation. All those things are available on the city's annexations webpage. And um, I know that the county has also posted this information on their webpage. So it's available on uh, multiple locations. So um, on the sixth, we published the ILA hearing notice in the Olympian and again mailed it to property owners and published it again to the city's annexation webpage. So we've tried to be as thorough as we can to get the information out there about what is being proposed and to give people access to whatever information they may need to understand the process. So in addition to that, we have obviously public comment opportunities. Some have already occurred when we had the open house. Of course, we took public comments and we published the names of staff that um, residents could write to, to express their um, feelings about the annexation. But of course, tonight is another opportunity. We're having a hearing, of course, and that means people get to talk and express their opinions about this. And of course, if, if the ILA is approved and the city goes forward to have hearings on the annexations, that is another opportunity for public comment. So we've had the open house, we have tonight, and then we have two, potentially two future hearings where people can come and express their support or opposition. Um, and again, as a public comment opportunity, citizens, residents are always welcome to provide written comments. So I'm going to give you the names of the staff members for both the city and the county. And again, all of this is available on the city and the county's website as well. Uh, so if you forget the name, um, you can always pull it up. But uh, Brad Medrude, the Long Range Planning Manager, um, at BMedrude@ci.tomwater.wad.us. You can always email him or mail to him at the city of Tom Waters Community Development Department. For the county, Jeremy Davis, the Operations Manager, is your point of contact. Uh, Jeremy dot Davis at CO dot Thurston dot Wad dot US. And again, you can mail, snail mail to the Thurston County Planning and Economic Development Department. And again, just to reiterate, the information that we do have available um, for anyone who does have questions, uh, all of these documents are available at the city of Tom Waters annexation website, which is listed here. And with that, I have nothing left on my presentation. I'm happy to take questions if there are any. And I know we have some, uh, several Tom Water staff here as well that uh, probably have more specific information for various services or, or whatever their departments do.
All right, I see questions from council members. I will start with uh, coun- uh, council member Snyder and then I'll go to council member Doha.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary, for your presentation. So actually, I have two questions. I know it's, I know it's been mentioned many times that the first eleven islands would be bundled together and then Trosper Lake Island would come later on. Why is it that we don't bundle the whole thing at once and just have one process and be done with it?
I think we did, went back and forth on that and we um, yeah. I, I can't give you a strong answer either way. Uh, I think it was just because the, the community of Trosper um, Lake Island was such a cohesive community, we wanted to deal with it almost as like its own community. I mean, we could have bundled them all together.
Okay, thank you for that. And one other question I have, I know that we've seen a presentation earlier that says the taxes are gonna be a little higher for this area, but eventually it'll go down. When we sent out these notices, do we highlight that so that the residents are informed what's gonna happen with the taxes?
Well, that is um, it's in the frequently asked questions document. So on the last two pages, there's a very detailed comparison, um, one of just property taxes. Um, and I guess if I could expand on that since I have the chance, property taxes will go up for about two years because the residents in these areas that are being proposed to be annexed were in the McLean Black Lake Fire Department and they had two voter-approved levies that increased their taxes. Uh, those will stay in place until twenty twenty-four. When they go away, property taxes themselves will actually be slightly less post-annexation. So uh, right now, um, property taxes are thirteen fifty-three per thousand. After annexation, they will go up to fourteen, but um, in, like I said, a couple of years, their actual total tax rate will, I don't have the actual per thousand, but um, but their tax, total taxes for a, say, a house of three hundred and thirty thousand, which is what we used for the study, in a couple of years, property taxes will go down from forty-six, forty-four sixty-four a year to forty-two twenty-four a year. That's not the whole analysis though, and I don't want to get into weeds too much, but I know this is a really important subject to a lot of people. The city does have other taxes related to utilities, like cable franchise and telephone and all that, which residents will pay that they weren't paying before. So the bottom line is, for the first two years, it will cost about thirty-eight dollars more per month to live in the city. But after the first two years, it'll be about five dollars and sixty cents more to live in the city per month. So there is an increase. I'm never one to say it's marginal, you know, money is money and some people think that that's a lot, so. But um, it's not as much, I think, as a lot of people think it might be.
Okay, thank you for that, Gary. I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Councilmember Doha.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Schneider, for bringing that up. I know we had a lot of discussions about that and that educational opportunity. I think it, we have to keep talking about that and addressing that. Gary, one of the questions I had is, could you remind me where in this process do we get any feedback or a summary of all those public notices and outreaches that we get to see who has replied?
So Brad Medrude has been keeping a, a log of all the people who have actually written in comments with their contact information and their comments. And so I'm sure that at some point, um, whether it's in a staff report, or I'm not exactly sure what the process, John might want to weigh in, what the process will be for sharing that information with you, but we have kept it and we're keeping all of tho- those contacts on an Excel spreadsheet to um, provide whenever the right time is right.
The, one of the reasons why I'm asking is I know certain developments in certain areas and certain personalities might need different outreach information or different presentation of materials to allay their concerns instead of just one fact sheet. And so that's what I was thinking is, could we tailor, depending on the needs and the concerns we hear from specific communities or one property owner?
Well, you know, I think, um, yeah, certainly. So far, it's really rare, the, the, the frequently asked questions fact sheet is very thorough. So, so far, almost anytime we've had a comment, we've been able to direct them to that particular portion of it, whether it's stormwater, garbage, fire, utility, you know what I mean? But of course, if there's information not on there, we would certainly tailor, you know, we would get that information for them. And then occasionally that happens, you know, when we had the open house, folks had very specific um, experiences, let's say, with traffic on their street or an intersection or something like that. And uh, so far, and I don't think it'll be any different in the future, we've always had a staff person at the city who would then directly uh, interact with them and give them the background on what's going on or collect information.
Perfect. I appreciate that background, Gary.
All right, is there any other questions? Um, Commissioner Mahia, do you have anything to add before we open up the public comment portion?
So I have to open the public hearing for the county. So with this, I'm opening the public hearing for the county and uh, our planning manager, Jeremy Davis, will be presenting some information. Um, and he's here to answer any questions. After that, we will have a discussion jointly with the city council. So with that, Jeremy, I will pass this on to you. And I don't have the gavel here, so pretend gavel.
Uh, thank you, Jeremy. As Mr. Cooper indicated, county staff has been working diligently with city staff on the draft, um, Tom Water annexation, island annexation and local agreement. Um, and I'm not gonna go over all the details that Mr. Cooper went over. We did work with other county departments on the draft interlocal agreement and it has been reviewed by the prosecutor's attorney's office. I do want to note that we received four written public comments for tonight's public hearing. Two were from Mr. Patrick Prince, one was from David Brown and, and one was from Derek Warner. And I believe the uh, comment log was also included with the city council agenda item, which has also been provided to the Board of County Commissioners. And again, of course, the goal of island annexations is to remove illogical boundaries in all of the twelve islands under consideration tonight, which we have for the public hearing, um, are all entirely surrounded by the city of Tom Water. And with that, I don't have anything else to add to Mr. Cooper's summary.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, do uh, any of our commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Edwards? A hearing none from him.
Wait, can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Go ahead, sir.
No, really, the only question that I have is the information that uh, was brought out by Matt Jackman about the uh, ditch district. Does that have anything to do with any of this activity we're contemplating?
No, sir. That was a, a, just a public comment. It, it did not have to do with um, this specific public hearing.
Okay, no, I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mensah, any questions?
No, I had a chance to look over the Tom Water um, materials, frequently had questions and whatnot. And as Mr. Cooper said, they're well done and pretty thorough. It answered all the questions I had. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for, uh, same. Um, okay, with that, Mayor Sullivan, I will pass it on to you to uh, open it up for public comment.
All right, and with that, I will open it up, the public hearing for the city of Tom Water and I want to check with uh, Planning Manager Brad Mulrude. Do you have anything to add to this before we start with public comment?
Mike and Brad is not able to be with us tonight, but we have no further comments either. Gary did a nice job with his summary.
Perfect. All right, so with that, we will open up the public hearing. I will have staff assist. I want to uh, let everyone know that they have four minutes for public testimony and no time may be given to any other person. And uh, we, any written record will be put into, any written documents will be put into public record. We will not read those out loud. So with that, I will uh, turn it over to staff to call the individuals who have signed up for public hearing. Thank you.
Mayor Sullivan and Commission Chairman Mahia, we have four registered for tonight's public hearing. Todd Fidel registered, but he is not in attendance. So we are going to start with Pamela Hanson, followed by Don Trosper.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Pamela Hanson, Post Office Box One Four Five Two One, Tumwater, Washington, nine eight five one one. I would like to simply state my support of the concerns of the subject properties. That is the end of my testimony.
All right, thank you. I believe Don Trosper was the next person on the list.
Hello, I am Don Trosper, twenty-two oh nine Trosper Road, Southwest, a name from my great-grandfather. And we have grown up in Tumwater city limits, although we've been in the county all that time. We're surrounded by the city. It didn't start off that way, but it is sure now, it passed to generations. Not, our our property is split up between my mother and sister and my brother behind us and us on road frontage. And I'm, I'm in favor of the of the council annexation. But my brother, I don't think is, I won't speak for him, but he he's not too happy about the extra taxes, which all of us disagree with, but understand. So, yeah, we, I I would say we're in favor of this annexation proposal.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Trosper. I'll turn it to staff for the other two, for any other members.
Yes, we have a Robin Stewart who would like to speak to the annexation.
Okay, go ahead. Robin Stewart, can you unmute yourself if you're able? Staff, is is Robin Stewart available or muted? Can?
I have asked her to unmute, or I've asked them to unmute, but it hasn't worked. And we might have one more public comment from a Walt Jorgensen in a moment. So we could switch to that and then see if Robin can unmute.
All right, we'll go to Walt Jorgensen and then come back to Robin.
Oh, I guess he doesn't want to speak. He just wanted to attend. So I think we can wait a moment for Robin and then see. That would be it for the night.
Okay. So again, I'll check with staff. We could also have, if Robin would like to submit written comments, we would certainly accept that. And we will also have a couple of other opportunities for public comment. So I will give it another minute and then see if she's able, if Robin is able to join us. I'm believing a minute is probably a little too long when it's silent, so. Still no luck with that staff?
No, and I believe that's all we have for tonight.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion. Anyone who had technical difficulties or was not able to join does have an opportunity to send their comments in in writing. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment portion of our public hearing. And Chair Mahia, do you have, did you want to close your portion?
Yes. Any further discussion from Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards?
No, I find, I'm satisfied. I think we've covered quite a bit, and staff's done a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
Oh, good to go.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Mensah?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye. This hearing is closed. Thank you. So the county will probably take a separate action at a later date that we will post. County Manager, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
No, I will bring to maybe next Tuesday for your further consideration and discussion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for joining us. And I will have, the City of Tumwater has the, council has the ability to make, take action this evening. So do we have any discussion from the testimony we've received? And do you want, do you have any want to take action this evening?
I'm willing to make a motion if that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, yes, please.
I would love to. Thank you, Mayor. I move that, hopefully I have the right phrase, that Tumwater City Council approves the Tumwater Island annexation in our local agreement.
This is Angela, I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to have a joint meeting with the county and and look forward to receiving your action later next week.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I guess I'll adjourn the the side of of the county meeting. Thank you very much for having us. It was a pleasure to be here with everyone tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.